Call the mean of county council order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. First is our optional prayer and vocation, Mrs. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to start out with the fact that we've had a, if you notice, we've got a council member that's not here this evening. He recently had some very severe surgery, but he's doing fine, planning on coming home, possibly today or tomorrow. He's going to have to rest and stuff, but Furi Leon is a wonderful member of our council and we're so glad just to hear that he's doing fine and everything's well. But let us pray. God, help us not to waste the hours, for time is the only thing that cannot be bought. Help us not to be frustrated, but hold on to hopes. We do not want to take anything for granted. Let not our anger burst into view destructively or indifference that will smother us. We do not want to hold suspicions wrongly, for we need to trust and not betray. As we work toward the good for all people, help us not to compromise our views. We ask this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mr. Leon?
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here. At this time, what is becoming a common occurrence here lately, we'd like to make a special presentation to Sue Ellen and Luigi. It's Luigi, there he is, he's hiding in the back. If you both could come forward. We suffered anyway a rash of retirements here lately. It is good that good people are able to move on to other stages of their life and enjoy life in different ways. We had Joe Maloney a couple of weeks ago, but today both Luigi and Sue Ellen, this is their last council meeting. And reading their citation is, all the different things that they have been involved in, you know, some 150,000 hours at least, many of those not on the clock, 56 combined years of experience. Like most members of council, they are probably two of the first people that you meet when you came to county government, two of the nicest people that you're ever going to meet. Like I said with Mr. Maloney, I am certain they have the undying gratitude of most members of council that have ever served, most county executives, but certainly hundreds of thousands of members, or I'm sorry, citizens of Erie County who have benefited from your hard work over those years to save money for the taxpayers, to make sure that our facilities are in proper order, to make sure that the budget is in proper order. And the advice and the information that you've provided, members of council, I know, has been invaluable to me, I'm sure I can speak for members of council as well, and wish you both the very, very best, you retire. Good luck.
Thank you, members of council and everyone in the audience. I have my, my kids are here, I have friends here, I have, you know, we really do appreciate these kind words that you have for us. It's been a wonderful experience, it's been a pleasure to be a very small part of so many different projects, so many different budgets, so many different issues. I hope that, that the citizens of Erie realize how many good people work for Erie County and how people really do care. There's a lot of tough decisions in front of you and a lot of work goes into it, so thank you so much from the bottom of my heart.
I want to thank everybody and pretty much ditto.
Don't be too modest, you were hardly a small part, both of you, very, very important parts of many, many projects over the years. And at this time, if any members of council would like to add, you're more than welcome.
Sure.
Mr. Horton?
Well, I've known Luigi a lot longer than I've known Sue Ellen. And just to sit here and see you at retirement age, we're a long way from the football field and First National Bank and little gritters football, but I can say this, the same grit and the same integrity and the same personal, personal goodness that you display and the same friendly demeanor that you exhibit on a day-to-day basis, you haven't changed a bit. And if you can go through life and you can, you can have a childhood friend say, that Luigi is the same as he's been all his life, which I can say that about you, the county hasn't changed you. I know that you have changed the county. And through you, I've met your wonderful wife, Sue Ellen. When I got here, I didn't know my, from a hole in the ground, I thought I knew a lot of stuff. I gained a whole lot of appreciation from my predecessor, Mr. Giles, because when you get here, it's kind of like being the new kid up at Glenwood Zoo on the merry-go-round. You just kind of jump on and hold on, nobody stops, ain't no instructions, there's no mentorship, none of that. But we had people like Mr. Maloney and we had Sue Ellen. And Sue Ellen gives you some numbers, you can take them to the bank, you can, you can count on it. That was never evidenced, never proven to be more evident than this last push, not only Mr. Maloney, but Jim Sparbern along with Sue Ellen gave us such wise and professional counsel as we seek to establish a community college here in our community. And the, the work that you poured into it and the, and the way that you carry yourself out through, through your duties, you're going to be missed. 280,000 citizens in Erie County, I don't know if they know the value that you have, but I can assure you, the seven of us do, and we appreciate you from the bottom of our heart. Thank you, you'll be missed.
Mrs. Fatiga?
I, as a county employee, recognize the hard work of Sue Ellen and Luigi on a daily basis, whether there was budgets that had to get taken care of or the flood in the communicable disease division of the health department. You know, the amount of hours and the dedication that the two of them have contributed to this county and in addition, the overwhelming additional help that they gave me when I became a member of council. No one deserves this retirement and to enjoy being grandparents more than Sue Ellen and Luigi. Thank you for everything you've done and good luck with the baby.
Mrs. Law?
Well, they were here when I got here. That's been, what, 20 some years now, Luigi and Sue Ellen? And I relied on both of them, because Luigi has helped me solve problems with some of the things that happened in my municipality, Franklin Township was one. And I remember saying to him, why are they doing the second floor when they're, when the water's leaking from the fifth floor? So we had all kinds of conversations on that type of a thing. And then Sue Ellen and the budget, she knows that inside and out, and that between the two of them, they have touched every single aspect of this county. And the citizens of Erie County would really admire them if they knew what those two have contributed to this. And I want to thank them both and good luck on your retirement.
Mr. Anderson?
I would just like to say, you know, we haven't worked together from the capacity that I'm in now for very long, but I've been involved in the community for a number of years and with Erie County. And there isn't one, one aspect or one project that I've been involved in from a community-wide aspect that most of the people, if not everyone involved, has said, you've got to go discuss buildings and grounds or anything with maintenance with Luigi and anything with numbers with Sue Ellen. And I just know that the respect that you've had from prior county executives, from prior council members is, is just unmatched. And from my standpoint, being a new council member, it's been a pleasure to work with you thus far, and I will miss having the opportunity to, to work with you farther in, in this professional capacity. But I know that you are great citizens of this community, we're honored to have you as part of our community and will certainly miss you from inside City Hall, but we welcome you with open arms as friends and good luck.
Mr. Rastetter?
Well, again, being the new guy, I haven't known you both very long, but I must say you are the most welcoming people in the courthouse and I really appreciate everything you've done. You are the sunshine in the courthouse, that's for sure.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, and again, good luck, very much so, very heartfelt. Okay, here to the public, anybody who called in ahead of time will have five minutes, anybody thereafter will have three, to speak on the subject of your choosing. First is David Moore, is he here tonight? If you could just step to the podium, if you could give us your name, your municipality, and then you're off and running, thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, council members, my name is David Moore, I'm from the borough of Edinburgh. Before I prepared my remarks for this evening, I asked Pennsylvania State Representative Mike Schlossberg what suggestions he had that would give my presentation greater impact. His advice was to share a personal story. So my name is David Moore and I represent 26,000 supporters and followers of an organization called the Pennsylvania Equality Project. We're an organization dedicated to fighting for full equality and fairness under the law for the LGBTQ community of Pennsylvania. I'm also the founder of the Gay-Straight Alliance at Conyote Area Senior High School. I have spoken with students firsthand who have survived conversion therapy attempts and I know firsthand the pain that they've endured. I also stand here today as a 10-year survivor and fighter of papillary thyroid cancer and as a result have retired from teaching. I am here today to talk about the need to implement a ban on conversion therapy in Erie County. The strain of cancer that I have called tall cell variant papillary thyroid cancer has no cure. Coincidentally, being lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, or in any way non-heteronormative in terms of sexual or gender identity is not a disease and thus requires no cure. Health professionals who offer a cure for being LGBT are peddling snake oil. That claim comes from numerous professional healthcare, social work, and education organizations. According to the University of California at Los Angeles School of Law, the Williams Institute, approximately 20,000 youth between the ages of 13 and 17 will undergo attempts at conversion therapy from licensed healthcare professionals before they reach the age of 18 in the 40 states that currently allow conversion therapy. An additional 57 youth will undergo conversion therapy attempts in all 50 states at the hand of religious or spiritual advisors. Nothing under Pennsylvania law prevents that from happening right here in Erie County. Throughout U.S. history, from 1890 to the present, numerous conversion therapy techniques have been used by healthcare professionals seeking to change a person's identity, including talk therapy, which is currently the most commonly used technique today. According to the National Center for Lesbian Rights, other methods include aversion treatments such as nausea, vomiting, paralysis, providing electroshock, or having the individual snap in elastic wristband when the individual has same-sex erotic thoughts. So what then are the harmful effects of conversion therapy? According to research conducted at San Francisco State University, young people who are LGBTQ who live in non-supportive environments and who undergo conversion therapy are eight times more likely to commit suicide. They are six times more likely to report high levels of depression and three times more likely to turn to illegal drugs. According to Governor Wolf, Pennsylvania already faces an opioid epidemic. We need not make matters worse even by one child by allowing conversion therapy to continue. Numerous professional organizations have taken a stand against conversion therapy, including the American Academy of Child Adolescent Psychiatry, who finds no evidence to support the application of any therapeutic intervention operating under the premise that a specific sexual orientation, gender identity, and/or general gender expression is pathological. The American Medical Association states further that our AMA opposes the use of reparative or conversion therapy that is based on the assumption that homosexuality per se is a mental disorder or based upon the a priori assumption that the patient should change his or her homosexual orientation. On December 20th, 2016, the city of Pittsburgh became the first municipality in Pennsylvania to ban the practice of conversion or reparative therapy under Section 628 of Title VI of the city's municipal code. Their ordinance makes illegal the practice of conducting conversion therapy within the city of Pittsburgh by any healthcare professional who is paid for his or her services. The city of Philadelphia followed suit on July 11th, 2017 with a similar ordinance. Philadelphia Code 9-903 imposes a penalty of loss of the required commercial activity license and a $2,000 fine for each instance of conversion therapy. The city of Allentown followed Philadelphia's lead on July 20th, 2017. Redding and Doylestown Borough passed similar ordinances in December of last year and State College did so in February of this year. The Commonwealth has yet to pass a statewide ban on conversion therapy. House Bill 1177 is presently stalled in the Health Committee of the General Assembly while Senate Bill 44 shares a similar fate in the Pennsylvania Senate. Lacking any further action from the Pennsylvania Legislature, minors in Erie County lack the protection afforded them in the aforementioned municipalities.
Mr. Moore, thank you, your time has expired, I apologize, but thank you.
Not a problem. Council members, if you'd care to see the rest, my remarks are posted online.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Randy Barnes.
Evening, council, administration, my name is Randy Barnes, I reside in Dr. Faust's district. Not sure if you've ever run around maybe, maybe somebody else's children, maybe not your own, but children that kind of ask and ask and ask and continue to ask for something until they get their way. It might be a piece of software, a new toy, or new shoes, or maybe it's a Big Mac instead of a Happy Meal. What usually happens when that child, that person, after nagging and nagging, think they want something, they finally get it, they sometimes like don't appreciate it anymore, do they? Or they don't want it, they were on to something else. You ever notice that behavior in younger children, maybe? Well, I would encourage us to kind of look in the mirror, some of us at council, maybe the administration, because that's kind of what happened on the Northern Pennsylvania Regional College. You know, back in 2014, our county executive wrote to Senator Wiley, "I appreciate the opportunity to offer my support for inclusion to the county of Erie into the rural regional college." 2014, in July. And then, you know, just a few weeks later, Mike Bachelor writes the same thing, "Thank you for your sponsorship of Senate Bill 1,000, we enthusiastically endorse your efforts." And that's to Senator Wiley to get Erie County included in the Northern Regional College. So Senator Wiley, at the encouraging, encouragement of some pretty important people, the county executive, a person, another person at a nonprofit that has millions of dollars at his disposal, and their opinions matter, and along with council members and other people in the community, encouraged Senator Wiley to push for us an inclusion. So Senator Wiley in August of that year uses his time, spends his political capital to the Department of Education encouraging Erie County be included, because Erie County wasn't part of this. So we have a nonpartisan group sign this, Senator Wiley, I mean Republicans and Democrats, Senator Hutchison, Senator Robbins, Representative Sonny, Representative Lucas, Representative Brooks, all encouraging our elected official to include Erie County. Well, guess what? It worked. The best-kept secret in Erie County is, it worked. We have, and the name is now Northern Pennsylvania Regional College. They're offering courses such as blueprint reading. They will do whatever they're asked to do, and I, I've said this a number of times, make them say no. Have any of you asked them to come in the past year and talk about the new programs? The new facility they're going to use in Union City? One of you represents Union City, right? Do you know that they're going to open, we're going to have a place, the Northern Pennsylvania Regional College is going to have a location in Union City. How many people in Union City know that? How many people has the representative from Union City told, well, maybe you don't even know that? That's because it's a secret. We don't want anybody to know it, because we want, no, we don't, I don't want it to, I want to see it succeed, because we have something, our tax dollars are being, have already paid for. Our tax dollars are paid for this Northern Pennsyl Regional College. It's a waste to think that our elected officials and including our county executive isn't behind this, talking about this, pushing this, because you know what, I'm going to be. I'm going to try to make the summer meetings this year, I can't promise I can, because I'm traveling a lot, but if I can make it, I can at least get the word out to some of these communities that know nothing about this. Yeah, it's been in the paper a couple of times. What they know is, we've been a big study, we spent half a million dollars or so to study to find out that people want something for nothing, or if not for nothing, close to nothing. Because when we ask them, do you want a community college and it's not going to cost, oh yeah, we want one because it won't cost as much. Well, it might not cost that person going to college, but unless these instructors are working free, someone else is paying for it. Someone else is paying for it, guess who it is? It's me. But I'm already paying for Northern Pennsylvania Regional College. I can't afford to pay for two competing colleges. I can't. Now, maybe you can, maybe these people out here can, or those people out there can, I can't. I can't afford to pay for two colleges or competing for the same students. Make that college say no. Get those people down there, get the business people in front of them and say, this is what we need, and make them say no, because they won't say no, their jobs depend on serving us. Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is our former colleague, Mr. Giles. Who's on the clock as we speak.
Having known them for about 40 years, I'm happy to indicate that I didn't realize that they actually had a family. I thought they were actually married to the county, in a celibate relationship, but married to the county, and are here weekends, morning, noon, and night, over all those 40 years. So my personal gratitude for all that you've done, for everybody here in Erie County.
Now, start the clock. You can be sure it has.
You want me to talk fast? Well, this is the 10th anniversary of the Erie County Poetry Project, and the reason that I'm here is because Berwyn Moore, each of the colleges have a representative on the project itself, Edinburgh, Ann and Baron, et cetera, and Mercyhurst. Berwyn has announced last week that she is retiring. Now, she's had probably about 40 years involved in the field, and one of her first projects that she did. Many of you are relatively new to the project, but one of the first projects she did was to create an anthology. It was a juried anthology called Dwelling in Possibilities, Voice to Erie County, this is it. And about maybe nine years or so ago, I was on the NACO Executive Committee, which is only like five people, and the officers were invited to the White House. And so in turn, going through all of that security and stuff, I wanted to present President Obama something that would tell him about us. So I took a copy of this with me. We had our meeting, it was very cordial, but the irony was, it was the day after Osama bin Laden had been caught and killed. And so the president, who from everyone, I'm not saying this in a pejorative way, was pretty tightly wrapped. Well, we just happened to be there the day afterwards and he was total opposite to that. He was unhinged, he was just, just so elated. So as I went to give him the copy of the book, the security guy off the wall came up to me and he said, no, back off. And so I gave him the thing, I thought, wow, now I've got a little influence, a little ear. But the thing about this, it's important to realize, is that this project took a lot of people in Erie County, prior to some here and everyone, and I want to thank you for your support that continues the project. Second story related to this is that CCAP did a, on their anniversary, did a time capsule. And serving on that board, they said, what would get from Erie County? I gave them a copy of this, so 50 years, or 40 years now, they will take the time capsule up and they will see, not a government boring document, but an actual verbal portrait of what people are like in Erie County. And I'll get copies of this to those who don't have one. At the back is, I told the president, at the back is a two-line bio, some very young people, some very old people, people like Charles Kennedy, whose wife submitted his poem, and he's the one who does the Harry T. Burley, or who did the Harry T. Burley imitations over the years. And so it is a nice portrait, verbal portrait. Now, coming forward, Berwyn, having announced that she is retiring, is going to get the John Ciardi National Award for Writing. And it hasn't come out yet, the book that she's getting the award for will be released probably midsummer at this point. But, so the people that you have representing you in this project are outstanding individuals and I can't say enough about them, they're very dedicated to writing, they're very dedicated to the people they're involved with, and they're very dedicated to the people. Lastly, Marissa Moxunger was at the library last night doing her farewell, she's wrapping up her term, so to speak. And the irony to this is that she did an anthology as well, but selected 20 writers, C. Williams, a group of different people, so there are 20, 20 or so local writers. But the project continues forward, the competition will begin this summer, and it's a jury process and, and I have not personally been involved in all of that. But what I wanted to bring you is Berwyn Moore's last project. And you can see in this. Anyway, that's a copy of, probably will be Berwyn's last product, but you can see in that, that it is a competitive process, that there are high school students, there are graduate students, it's national and a whole group of people, and it's just something to add to your edification of what's happening within writing and especially within poetry, within Erie County. And again, without your support, it wouldn't happen. And lastly, this is the picture that I'll get a copy from her of Marissa Moxunger's anthology, and for those of you who are new, I'll get a copy for you of the one that's 10 years old. But I think it's exciting to know that some of you will be here 40 years from now, but when CCAP takes up the time capsule and takes that thing apart, we have the most colorful, the most detailed, the most impressive portrait of the people living in Erie County.
Was Berwyn the one that wrote a poem about Pennsylvania when CCAP was here that?
No, that was Bron Hay.
That was the.
Marissa Moxunger was the one who did the one about the chimney stack.
She did, she did the chimney.
She did that last night, she's added to that thing, and it's all in here, so I'll make sure everyone on council gets a copy of this from her. And again, thank you, I can't thank you enough, because you, the, I thought to myself, well, you never hear all of this, and I don't, I know you've got lots of it, but you never hear what I would call some really positive thing. And when you realize that we're carving a piece of history, brick by brick, or piece by piece, and, and it's quite exciting, and I know CCAP is impressed, I know the president was quite impressed, and so I hope you continue to remain impressed and continue to support. Kathy Dolcomfor was at the wrap-up last night at the library and made many comments about her support and concern and whatever impression of both Marissa and, and all the folks who are there.
Thank you, Mr. Giles. You made it just under five minutes, if you believe that, I have a bridge for you in Brooklyn somewhere that you can cross.
Thank you, again.
Thank you.
Oh, and I have to go, they're doing a photo of the writers at Calamari's.
That'll be a happy photo.
Seems like old times, Mr. Giles, thank you very much.
Moving on, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the-
Moving on, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 17 regular meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Law and seconded by Mr. Horst. Is there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the minutes, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Reports of county officials, the county executive, and/or her designee? All right. Thank you. Finance Committee, Mrs. Fatika.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met on April 26, and we, under New Business, agreed to ordinances, items A through E on the agenda, and then in addition, for possible appointments, items H through M. And that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Fatika? And in the absence of our chair and vice chair personnel, I chaired Personnel last Thursday, and we agreed to put on ordinances number 41 and 42 regarding the increased security at the library. Any questions regarding Personnel? Okay, moving on to reports of other members of Council. Mrs. Law.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the assessment meeting on April 12, and the meeting opened up with the veterans' exemptions. There were three new approvals, one renewal, and five removals from the exemption list. The last meeting, they had asked for information on Gdic to help them make a decision as to the status of the exemption. They had received the lease agreement and information from the Knox Law Firm that had argued that they should be exempt, and examples to support their case. The exemption was discussed and voted on. It was decided by unanimous vote that Gdic is not exempt for 2019. Gdic will have 30 days to appeal the decision. The rest of the meeting was done under executive session. I also attended the Erie County Planning Commission meeting on April 26. They had the election of officers at that time. Charles Casey was elected president. Jim Cardman was elected vice president. There was a report on the newly-formed Land Bank Board meeting. They're working on the ideas brought from the members and trying to form bylaws. It was decided that the Planning Commission would hear a report from them, no less than quarterly, and requested that County Council also hear a quarterly report. It was, it was reported from Amy that the Director of Staffing of the Planning Department, she says that there's two positions empty, and they're looking for qualified people to fill that. The new ordinance we have on our agenda, it happens to be the first one, was discussed and explained to the board by Amy. The need of gathering this information and sharing of the material from municipalities and businesses to be used to move Erie County forward was discussed. The board seemed to be in favor of this being done. The next meeting's going to be June 13 at 6 o'clock, and that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Law. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to Old Business. Is there a motion to bring ordinance number 31 off the table?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make that motion to take ordinance 31 off the table.
Moved by Mr. Rastetter and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. That goes right to a vote. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On the motion, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. All right, that has been brought off the table, so could we have a second reading of ordinance number 31, please, and title only?
A second reading of ordinance number 31, 2018, second 2018 planning fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $52,500, and new line items for community and economic development data collection.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Horton.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Any discussion? For the audience's edification, if you have not been here before, the screen will give you more information as to what we are voting on than just what you will hear from the reading of Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance 31, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. And also, all ordinances require two readings unless we move it to a second reading, which we will do here for some of these probably in a few minutes. Any other appointments or resolutions just require one reading. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's, I'm sorry, to amend tonight's agenda?
So moved.
By moving ordinances 38, 39, 40, I'm sorry, 37, 38, 39, 40 to second readings.
Yeah.
Moved by Mr. Horst.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. Is there any discussion regarding the amendment of tonight's agenda? Mr. Smith, roll call, please, to amend the agenda.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. So we'll have a first reading of ordinance number 36, please, and title only.
A first reading of ordinance number 36, 2018, amending the county purchasing code contained in Article III, Section 1G1 of the Administrative Code of Erie County.
Second reading of ordinance number 37, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 37, 2018, second 2018 library fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $21,496 in deferred 2017 revenue for District Center Library.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion regarding that ordinance? Roll call, please. Mr. Smith.
On ordinance 37, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 38, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 38, 2018, third 2018 library fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $5,000 for teen reading lounge grant.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
On ordinance 38, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 39, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 39, 2018, fourth 2018 library fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $2,300 for increase in fees collected.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Smith.
On ordinance 39, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance number 40, please, and title only.
A second reading of ordinance number 40, 2018, 2018 general fund budget, revised expenditures of $500, and creation of line items for Penn dot grant.
So moved. Awesome.
Moved by Mr. Horton.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith, roll call, please.
On ordinance 40, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Maybe. Just making sure you're paying attention. Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number 41, please, and title only.
A first reading of ordinance number 41, 2018, fifth 2018 library fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $13,638 in additional custodial expenditures for increased library security.
So moved.
It's a first reading. Okay. First reading of ordinance number 42, please, and title only.
The first reading of ordinance number 42, 2018, 17th 2018 general fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $27,276 in additional custodial expenditures for increased library security.
Mr. Horton?
Chair? I move that we move items H, that we act on items HI, JK, L, and M, which deals with the possible board appointments, certain individuals, and I move that we all deal with those all in one motion.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton and seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Any discussion regarding any of those appointments? Mr. Smith, roll call on the appointments, please.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes. And the thing for the good of the order tonight, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Council stands adjourned. Thank you, everybody.